Unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. 3.1 Addition of items of new business to the agenda.
There are none.
3.2 Minutes of the July 1, 2019 regular board meeting. Okay, 3.3 Approval of the Finance Report. 3.4 Approval of the Activity Fund Reform. 3.5 Approval of Activity Fundraisers. 3.6 Approval of Activity Fund Inner Account Transfers. 3.7 Declare the Following Items as Surplus.
Okay, if we'll go back and look at 3.2, the minutes from the July 1 regular board meeting, I did not see any errors with those minutes. 3.3 Our Finance Report, just beginning, closing out our new year and beginning our new year. I will tell you that one of the key indicators for our district is gross production. And we have collected in that month as compared, in the month of July as compared to last July, thirty-three thousand less. And so there has obviously, and we know that from what we've seen previous, we've obviously seen a drop in the price of oil. And so we continue to be mindful of that. Everything we hear from the State Department is that funding is up. And in fact, it has been with our initial allocation. But we still want to be mindful of those four local areas of chargeables because that's really what has helped our district through our gross production tax. And we really want to continue to watch that. If you look at 3.4, Activity Funds are all in good shape at this point in time. Many of the fundraisers have not really started. Probably the biggest change in an activity account you would see would be in the NFL, which is 918, the speech account. They had a fundraiser with fireworks this July. So that's really going to be some, a change to theirs. But thus far, not many of our organizations have started those fundraising efforts yet. 3.5 We have a couple of fundraisers that have been included to this board agenda. The Class of 2021 is going to be working concession stand, which would be the junior class. And then there are three fundraisers for our sophomore class. But they will all be raising money towards their prom this year also. 3.6 There are no inner account transfers. 3.7 We have two items or two lists of surplus. We have one from Alba Middle School. Those middle school surplus items are just items that need replaced or have been replaced and surplussed into our old bus barn. And then the second list of items is from Longfellow. Those are some technology that's no longer used in that building. Any questions about the consent agenda?
I would make the motion that we accept 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, 3.5, 3.6, and 3.7 as presented.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item 4 Vote to Approve Purchase Order Incumbrances for the Following Funds for Fiscal Year 2020. 4.1 General Fund Number 11 Purchase Orders 194 through 257 totaling $120,721.33 with change orders 1 through 257. And Payroll Purchase Order 50175 through 50177 totaling $50,261.82 with change orders $50,000 through $50,177 for a year-to-date total of $10,133,911.56. Reminder to all of them?
Sure.
4.2 Building Fund Number 21 Change Order Number 1 for a year-to-date total of $20,000. 4.3 Child Nutrition Fund Number 22 Change Orders 1 through 14. And Payroll Changes $50,000 through $50,009 for a year-to-date total of $387,838.72. Gift Fund Number 81 Purchase Order Number 1 through 8 totaling $48,500 with change orders 1 through 8 for a year-to-date total of $48,500.
Okay, we'll go back and look at 4.1, our General Fund. And I will go through a few of those purchases for the month. Number 197 with NW OSU Printing Services, $2,474. Those are copies of our strategic plan. We look forward to presenting the copies of those to those members that worked on that plan. We will also have plans available at each site for community members to come and look at and pick up to review. Number 202 COSA, $1,800, that's professional development for teachers. Number 211 Treat Solution, that is our Fall Custodial Supply Order, $14,326. Number 212 Pioneer Security System, $6,693. That's an upgrade to the fire alarm panel and system at the middle school. 228 Behavior Doctor Seminars, $5,000. Last year, we implemented PBIS in our elementary and middle school. And this year, we will start implementation at the high school. And so that's to pay for the training of Dr. Ripel to be able to come up here and help our teachers with that. Purchase Order Number 236 Firefly Computers for $30,000. This is to replace some Chromebooks and then also bring a few more into the middle school to get one-to-one that's going to purchase 30 Chromebooks. Number 250 Amazon Corporate Credit. That is a 3D printer that we are purchasing for our new aerospace class at the high school. And finally, 254 Educational Base Services, $17,600. That is our contract in psychological services that are a part of the IEP process. 4.2 Our Building Fund. There are no expenditures out of this fund this month. Child Nutrition Fund, nothing out of it. 4.4 Our Gift Fund. The purchase orders out of 4.4, the gift fund, are for the Shared Trust Scholarship. And there are 35 students, former students, that are receiving those scholarships. Are there any questions with our General Fund or Gift Fund? If there are none, I would recommend their approval.
I would make the motion that we approve 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4 as presented.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Superintendent's Report?
Tonight, we're going to begin with our strategic plan. And one of the great parts of the strategic plan, or I think that we're most excited about, is the accountability measures that are part of it. And so we're happy tonight to have Teresa Rader, first grade teacher at Washington Early Childhood, and Steve Ward, a committee member on our strategic plan. They are going to be giving kind of a brief summary of what's been going on with the curriculum and instruction area. And so we are glad to have them here tonight. And I will turn it over to them.
Okay, what we are getting ready to do this next school year is to implement our strategic plan. And we have set some very high goals that we will really strive hard to achieve. We haven't actually started the implementation of these through our professional development that's coming up this week and next. We will start to implement or learn how to implement these. One of the things, the interventions we do plan on doing is we've realized that we lack basic factory call. And so one of our initiatives is to spend at least 10 minutes every session, every, to dedicate to basic facts. I know the MAPS teaching is coming in for the junior high school for professional development. The K-20 Center will take care of the elementary to help us on common language and instructional practices in both, to engage our students in their area of literacy. And to hold our staff accountable, we will be doing it through teacher evaluations and observations. And we're also, in the elementary and junior high, we have already implemented the MAPS testing. And the high school will begin doing that this coming year.
At the high school, we're also going to start offering additional courses, expanded opportunity for media production class, more project-based and team teaching with it. Additional principles, in addition of principles to technology and aerodynamics class will be where students focus on engineering, robotics, aviation industries. In addition to that, they're also going to do more concurrent college offerings. That way, the high school or the, when they start college, will have more towards their degree. And then, as she said, we haven't started any of this. It's not, nothing's been completed yet. We're just, this week and next week, they're going to start it. The professional development days will allow for the information to be getting out to the staff. Several things upcoming, the ICAP. Miss Kane?
Yeah, I will be presenting. Misty?
Will be Friday during the PD for staff engagement. Some of the roadblocks we foresee might be coming, will be time constraints, the staff acceptance. And there has been no roadblock so far, but those are things that we could see be an issue. All campuses to maintain integrity, communication of goals, outcomes, keeping stakeholders focused on task, and celebration and acknowledgement of success is will be important.
Do you guys have any questions for Steve or Teresa or any of our administrators with regard to implementation?
I do.
Yes.
They both serve with strategic planning. And some people don't realize how many days did that include out of their lives to come and do strategic planning with that group? Do you guys remember how many days you did that?
Five days.
Five days, full days?
Full days.
Well, thank you for your service. Our students, our community appreciate you.
Thing else? Okay, thank you all very much. You can stay.
Ah, now you're taking a breath.
Just waiting. Just waiting. You all are welcome to stay or you may leave. It's up to you. We will move along to 5.2, our resignations and reassignments. We have a resignation from Terry Parsons. And she will be dearly missed. She's done a fantastic job at Washington Early Childhood and our library with our midterm program. But she also took on the responsibility of our high school academic team coach. And she did a fantastic job with that. So she's got another opportunity. And we appreciate the years of service that she's given our district. And then we also have a resignation from Janine Cloyde. And so we wish her the best also. Communication, just reminder that we have our school board conference at the end of the month. And so I believe everyone has been getting their information about when you'll be attending to Terry and Madonna also. I might mention that back in July, we brought an activity bus here for everyone to tour and get on and see what that was like. Steve Ellis and Richard Burton went to Dallas a couple of weeks ago and were able to look at some different buses. We are looking at purchasing a couple of those buses at a cost of around $300,000. They're going to be newer buses. We expect fewer problems with those buses. And with our added activities and excitement over our programs, we think this will be good for our students. So you will be seeing that purchase order next month. And with that, that is all I have with my communication.
Items of Current Business. 6.1 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve an Offer of Employment on a One-Year Temporary Contract to Applicant Number 1 and Applicant Number 2 Certified Positions for the 2019-20 School Year.
And I'll start. We did not ask Ms. Bell to come tonight. You all have met her and were introduced to her. She did a fantastic job with our vocal music program this past year. And she is still going through the certification process. She is emergency certified through the State Department. We are excited to continue to have her on our staff. So I would recommend her hiring. And I will let Ms. Martini introduce our next teacher.
Okay, I brought with me tonight Mrs. Taylor Johnson. She has just completed her first year of teaching. And she's going to be coming to the middle school. And I'm super excited that she is certified in a few different areas so she can help out our staff a lot. She's going to be teaching sixth grade social studies and a sixth grade science class.
I would make a motion that we accept both of these people. We're glad that you're part of the team.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve an Offer of Employment for 2/7 of the day on a One-Year Temporary Contract to Applicant Number 1 Certified Position for the 2019-20 School Year.
Ms. Martini?
Okay. I also brought with me tonight Ty Hooper. He is going to come into the middle school and pick up some coaching, some athletic hours for me that I was needing to fill. And he also is a certified PE instructor. So we're excited to present him.
Make a motion, we approve 6.2. Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Congratulations. You guys are welcome to continue to stay or you can go. Wait just one second. Any pictures or?
Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve an Offer of Employment to the Following Bus Drivers for 2019-20 School Year.
Okay, so we have the following certified staff that will continue to drive our buses for Scott Ball, Steve Gill, Cody Hooper, and Terry Chapman. All have had experience doing so for us and are going to be able to cover all our routes for the year. And I would recommend that you guys approve their hiring. I make the motion, we approve 2.
There were more than two.
6.3.
How many, how many bus drivers did you mention?
All four bus drivers.
Four? Four of them? I was second then.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve an Offer of Employment to Applicants Number 1 through 4 Non-Certified Positions for 2019-20 School Year.
Mr. Feely?
Tonight, we have Rebecca Buckley here with us. She has graduated Alba High School. She's worked in the community for several years now. And it's my recommendation that we approve the hire of her for a pre-K Teacher's Aid Position.
And your next applicant?
Okay. Also, I have Ashley Brinkley here with me. And we just heard a minute ago Terry Parsons has resigned. And so we were in search of a librarian. And Ashley has a love for the library and books. And it is my recommendation that we approve her for the Washington Non-Certified Library Position.
We have two applicants that were not here tonight. Courtney Knight will be a paraprofessional at Longfellow. And Ashley Ryle will be a paraprofessional at Lincoln. And both of those will meet some needs of our students this year. So I would recommend the hiring of all four of these applicants.
Make a motion, we hire applicant 1, 2, 3, and 4 for 6.4.
Second. Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
And you're going to get your picture. You're going to fit in just fine with this.
Yes.
Yeah, she is. Congratulations, ladies. Welcome.
6.5 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve the Revised Extra-Duty Assignment Schedule for Fiscal Year 20.
So this extra-duty assignment schedule reflects some of the changes that you've seen tonight and the hirings that you've seen tonight. You will notice that Ms. Hurst, Ms. Hammer, Ms. Woods, their vocational grant money, we highlighted that because it changed. And so we got the correct number there. You will also see mentor teachers. We've tried in the last couple of years to assign new staff mentor teachers, to go through a checklist with them, explain to them the purchase order process, leave process, and so on. And so you will see that Kelly Woods has been added to the extra-duty assignment list to be the mentor to Adam Stewart. And Kay Christensen will be Taylor Johnson's mentor. Any questions with the extra-duty assignment schedule? We do expect to bring that back as we continue. We're still looking for some staff to take care of some other things. But what we do believe that we will get those positions filled and hired and brought to you hopefully in September. And I might add also, I left off Chance Davis is also on the extra-duty assignment list. Chance has helped with our high school baseball for, gosh, a while. And Chance is going to also be helping with our middle school softball this year also. Be the assistant coach there.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion that we approve these people.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.6 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve the Alba Public Schools Handbooks for the 2019-20 School Year.
All of the administrators have worked on their handbooks this summer. I believe that we attached those handbooks in July. July's board meeting for you to begin to review. If there are any questions that you have with our handbooks, principals will be happy to entertain any of those questions.
When the, when the handbooks get handed out, does every student get one? Or everybody gets ones?
We hand ours out on the first day at the middle school. And then we take the time to go through it and go through different areas and send it home. And the parents have to sign it and kids sign it and send it back.
Okay.
We hope to have back-to-school night. Upon approval, we'll start printing.
Okay.
Any other questions? We are excited about some of our changes with our programming. We're going to be able to offer some concurrent enrollment through Northwestern in our partnership with Dr. Cunningham, Dr. Haniford. They've been great to work with. And so we're going to be able to offer some concurrent enrollment on-site. And so we're excited about that. We're excited about our continued partnership with Northwest Technology Center. We continue to work with them through their biomed program and through all of their industry certifications. Those classes that they take through biomed and through concurrent enrollment will count towards honors. And so we're excited about the work that our administrators did to research those questions, to talk to parents, to talk to faculty, and find the best solution for our young people. If there are no questions, I would recommend that we approve the handbooks for the 19-20 school.
Make a motion, we approve all three handbooks for the 19-20 school.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.7 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve Brooke Meyer as an Adjunct Instructor for Anatomy and Physiology for the 2019-20 School Year.
This agenda item, if approved, will allow for our students to take Anatomy and Physiology through Northwest Technology Center. And I would recommend that we approve Brooke as an adjunct instructor for this class for the 19-20 school year. That's all moved.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson? 6.8 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve Dixie Meyer as an Adjunct Instructor for Two Hours of Chemistry for 2019-20 School Year.
Again, we are working with our, with the adjunct certification. Dixie's background in nursing makes this a good fit for her. And this allows her to teach chemistry, which she will be doing next year. And I would recommend our approval of this.
I would make a motion that we accept that, 6.8.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.9 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve Mary Tyree as an Adjunct Instructor for One Hour of Life Science for the 2019-20 School Year.
And again, this follows the same premise as the last two agenda items. And I would recommend that we approve Ms. Tyree to be our life science instructor for one hour.
So moved.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.10 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve a Library Media Specialist Statutory Waiver Application for Kara Brock.
Earlier in the summer, spring, we reassigned Kara to our high school library. And she was very interested in that position. And so we have hired her and reassigned her to that position. Part of the qualifications for that, or requirements, is that Kara goes back to school and gets the library media science degree. And she is currently enrolled at UCO. And it's honored way to do that. And I would recommend that the board approve this statutory waiver application for Ms. Brock.
So moved.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.11 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Accept Credits for Northwest Technology Center for Students Attending Career Tech Classes and Earning Credits in Mathematics and/or Science for the 2019-20 School Year.
This allows our students to receive credit from the career tech classes in math and science. It enhances our collaboration, our work with them, which was a critical part of our strategic plan. And I would recommend that this agenda item be approved.
Make a motion, we approve 6.11.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.12 Discussion with Possible Board Action Vote to Approve the Adoption of the Resolution to Endorse the CCOSA?
Yes.
Is that how you say it? Okay. No, I didn't. I'm sorry.
You're all right.
Put that together. Blended Virtual Learning Framework that Includes Standards for High-Quality Blended and Virtual Education and to Utilize the Tenants of the Framework in the Development of a New Blended Virtual Learning Opportunities or in the Assessment of Existed Blended Learning, Blended Virtual Learning Programs.
I'm going to, part of our strategic plan was to investigate an alternative academy, alternative education plan for students. And I'm going to let Mr. Feely, he's been charged with looking at this through his position as curriculum director. So I'll let him speak on this for a few minutes.
So for several years throughout the state, there has been offerings with some virtual charter schools. And what that is targeted towards are kids who have trouble functioning in a regular traditional classroom. in a regular traditional classroom. That may be homework or it might be behavior, any of those kind of things. And so schools across the state lost kids to places like Epic Charter School, which has been in the news quite a bit lately. So as a, as a state, there, some of the schools are starting to look at creating their own virtual schools that would allow us to maybe better meet the needs of those kids that maybe struggle with a traditional classroom. So COSA has created a framework for what that blended learning would look like. And by blended learning, we're talking about part of it's online and part of it is face-to-face with teachers. In fact, the framework calls for daily face-to-face interactions with students. So there, you know, at one point about 10 years ago, we saw a lot of online, everybody adopted an online curriculum, which we do every year. What the statistics show is that kids in a true online, you know, self-paced atmosphere, they tend to evacuate into our school within two to three weeks. So blended learning with the face-to-face with the teacher is another support to help that work a little bit better. So that's what this framework is about. We are looking at potential, possible offsite locations and possible locations on campus that might be able to house such a virtual academy for our school to help us continue to serve our kids here in the community.
With the teachers, others, our currently employed teachers that would be having face-to-face communications with these online, this online...
Staffing is some questions that we have to look at.
And I know you just look at the framework and what they recommend set up.
And we've been looking at that part too because it would take some staffing and whether that's already in the district or whether that's additional, we haven't worked that part out yet. Part of it would depend on what kind of kids, what their needs are, I'm sure, and what our schedule would allow. So there's a lot of questions to be answered.
Well, there are because you've got classes that they have, you know, seven periods in a day and they've got six pre-ops anyway and then we ask them to do this on top of and I can understand the fluidity of it.
Yeah.
But it's also we've got to be responsible and take good care of our teachers who are taking such good care of our kids and so I just wondered, I didn't know who, where that might come from.
Our strategic plan calls for us to investigate this in the spring and so we're kind of getting a little bit ahead of that schedule just a tad, but, you know, talking to other schools who have done it and done it well as well as, you know, finding what fits for our district. We're in the investigation phase of this.
Thank you for your diligence because I know it's going to take very long to watch TV and see Epic and, okay, well, 122, whatever all that is on TV, there's lots of avenues available, so thank you for that investigation. Look forward to hearing more about it.
So with approval of this item, is that for you, approval to investigate that?
So, so what COSA sent out to you and what do you find in your attachment? They got together a group of districts and they worked on a framework or how should this look in public schools? So this, your voting to approve this is to support that resolution and that finding that there is a place for virtual learning and blended learning, but there's, but there's a certain way that it needs to be done and it's in support of that framework COSA has developed. Does that answer it?
Yep.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve number 12. 612. Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.13, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following board's policies: MDFD, CN-R3, DHAH, FFAC, FFACA, FNF, FNF-R, FNFA-E, FNFA-R.
I'm going to start by thanking Mr. Hanson, Ms. McDermott, Ms. Martini, Mr. Potter. We got together and reviewed some newer policies and what happens is you finish up your legislative session and then the School Association reviews statutes and laws that were passed and put into place and then they send out policies to be adopted by board. And so all of these policies were reviewed by the committee, save one, and that was FFAC. And that's an additional policy that wasn't reviewed by the committee, but we're adding that tonight and I'm asking you to approve that because we've had some stu, or had some parents that have not signed our written authorization for medical care. And what FFAC does is that allows for our administrators to contact those, those parents that have refused to sign that and kind of details our responsibility with regard to medical care for that student. And so I would ask that you would approve all of the board policies for 6.13.
Which one is the one we have with the FFAC first aid students?
I would make a, I'm sorry. I'd make a motion that we accept 6.13 and appreciate the committee's work on that. That's a lot of revisions and staying of policies, but it will, once again, serve our students to the best of our ability.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.14, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following contracts for fiscal year '20. 6.14.1, American Fidelity Service Contract. 6.14.2, City of Alba SRO Contract. 6.14.3, Oklahoma Department of Career Technology Secondary Career and Technology Program Contract. 6.14.4, Big Five Community Services Agreement. 6.14.5, Educational Base Services. 6.14.6, U.S. Foods Extension Agreement.
Okay, so we'll start with 6.14.1, the American Fidelity Service Contract. That is for our employees and their 403B tax saving annuities that they can work with on American Fidelity. We've worked with them for a long time and this is a pretty routine agenda item. 6.14.2 is our SRO contract. That is the same contract that we had last year. That has been a good program for our school district and for our staff and for our students. And so we're going to bring that to you again. There's been a slight adjustment in the hourly wage through the city, but it has been good for our students. 6.14.3, the Oklahoma Department of Career Technology Secondary Career and Technology Program Contract. This allows us that when we participate in these courses in the career tech, they provide us with program assistance money and so by agreeing to this contract, we receive that program assistance money. 6.14.4, the Big Five Community Service Agreement. This is our service agreement with our three-year-old program. We work with them and their special education students by providing services to those students that need it. 6.14.5, Educational Base Services. We mentioned this earlier in our discussion of purchase order, purchase orders for the month. Educational Base Services, this company this year will be providing our psychological services for the district. This is a component of the IEP process and it is a requirement. 6.14.6, our U.S. Foods Extension Agreement. Again, we did this last year. Our Mrs. Echols joins with some other school districts, 25 others approximately. They are part of a campus SMART program which helps with the purchasing of foods. Any questions about those contracts? If there are none, I would recommend their approval.
I'd make a motion that we approve 6.14.1 through 6.14.6 as presented.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.15, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a bid for milk and related products.
So we had one bid from Highland Dairy and you can see on the attachment, the second page, it gives the bid price for those dairy items and I would recommend the approval of this bid with Highland Dairy.
They gone up any?
We did not use Highland Dairy last year, so I'm not for sure. Last year, Shane, I believe, we purchased our milk products through the campus SMART and we're going to purchase through Highland this year, but I'll check, I'll check and make sure.
I'd make a motion that we approve 6.15.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.16, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the federal guidelines using the 2019-20 paid lunch equity price guide for Alba Public School meals for the 2019-20 school year.
Per the recommendation of Mrs. Echols, we are going to increase our school meals by 10 cents and part of this is a paid lunch equity tool that she inputs the cost of meals and then it, for lack of a better, it equals out across the United States for reimbursement. And so this is a requirement to be a part of this and receive federal funds and so I would recommend this approval.
Make a motion that we approve 6.16. Second.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Seven new business, there isn't any?
Correct.
Number eight, oppose executive session to discuss AEA negotiations for 25 OS Section 307B2. Vote to convene an executive session.
Make a motion. We convene an executive session.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.